I'm going to have councilman Ricardo Pacheco lead us in invocation followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to stand, please do so at this time. Thank you.
Mayor, before we begin, I also like to just mention that Captain Taylor is now a doctor of education. So we want to recognize him for that.
Alright, Dr. Taylor, I didn't know that.
I passed that yesterday. And also yesterday was Cesar Chavez's day, so keep him in mind in your prayers. And also Captain Reynoso, keep him in mind. He's going to move on to another position at Almonte. So we'll be discussing that later today. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful city that we have. Please bless our leaders, our school district leaders, water district leaders, our city council leaders, state officials to help them in making the right decisions and moving this city in the right direction. Keep our prayers for our police officers, our firemen, our firefighters, the men and women that are in the armed forces that are protecting our city and their family members that are here in absence of their loved ones that are out supporting our city. So for these things, we asked our Lord to pray for. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, we're going to face the flag for the pledge. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I want to say good evening. At this point, we're going to have councilmember Vice Mayor Cruz Baca close on behalf of family.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to close on behalf of Isidoro, or as he was known, Choro Burrola. He is the father of a former mayor in Irwindale, longtime resident of Irwindale, one of the founders of the Burrola family, and our condolences goes out to their family.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that. Well noted. Okay, at this point, we have several presentations. So, and actually, oh, excuse me, sorry about that. We are going to our deputy, the clerk would take roll call. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Rubio.
She is excused.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
She should be here shortly.
Councilmember Pacheco. Mayor Protem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Lozano.
Present.
Please note that City Clerk Alejandra Avila and Treasurer Maria Contreras are excused this evening.
Yes, that is correct. Okay, move to excuse both of them and as well as Councilmember Susan Rubio. That will be out. Alright, so at this point, we're going to, just, we're going to open up the city council along with the finance and the housing. We have those, this one, we have different presentations. The first one that we have is a presentation of proclamation recognizing April as donor awareness. So is that the proclamation? No, that's something totally different. So who's doing that presentation? Do we have anything for that? Let me just double check. Bear with me. Presentation of proclamation recognized April as donor awareness. This is it. Oh yeah, DMV, right in front of me. I'm not certain if we do have anyone here. I'll just go ahead and just read it. DMV donates Life California Month, April 2015, organ tissues. Marrow and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need. More than 121,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. The need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. At any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer and marrow donors. A single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidney, pancreas, and small intestines can share up to eight lives. A donation of tissues can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others. And a single blood donation can help three people in need. Millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors. Over 10 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored. California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or reviewing their driver's license or IDs and cards of the California Department of Motor Vehicles. So that is very important, very crucial in our state and throughout the country. Alright, the next item that we have is the presentation of certificates of recognition to Maria Gonzalez and Alfredo Orozco in recognition of being awarded the CCPHA 2014 Guardian of Health Award. So are they, are they here? Oh, hey, hey, what's up Christina? Didn't see Christina there. It was us. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and the great residents of the city of Baldwin Park. My name is Christina Cardenas. I'm an advocacy manager for the California Center for Public Health Advocacy, and we're here tonight for a very special reason, in the spirit of Cesar Chavez, to honor compassion, great strength, and leadership. I represent the California Center, which is a nonprofit, non-government organization focused on building healthy communities by advocating for groundbreaking health policies and community programs, of which Baldwin Park has been the most progressive and the most collaborative in working with residents to make this great effort. Knowing we cannot make this, do this work alone, we have partnered with community advocates to move this work forward. It's been through the work with these local health advocates that we'd like to recognize through our annual Guardian of Health Awards. CCPHA recognizes leaders at the local level whose work has helped achieve CCPA's vision of creating communities in which physical, social, and economic conditions support health and well-being of all residents to reduce health disparities. In addition, CCPHA has also recognized community advocates, high school students, and young health professionals and elected and local leaders whose contribution have made a positive impact. For the list, we'd love to share this evening that tonight, we have the honor of presenting two CCPHA guardians of health who happen to be Baldwin Park residents amongst us in this front row. I'd like to first speak, speak a little bit about these two recipients. They've been, these awards have been presented to leaders who have shown commitment to children, to adults, to ensuring that communities have access to physical activity and healthy food opportunities. I'd like to first start off with Alfredo Orozco, who I admire very much. Alfredo Orozco also served on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the city of Baldwin Park, has been very active in his daughter and his family's lives in being a role model, providing a great foundation for his family and leading by example. Alfredo Orozco was one of the founding members of the Baldwin Park Resident Advisory Council, which has met for over eight years now in the city every month to advocate for improving health and wellness in the school arena, in the community arena, and at home. Alfredo has worked with advocates on healthy policies and street designs to make the healthy choice the easy choice. Maria Gonzalez has also been a founding member of the Baldwin Park Resident Advisory Council. She has vigorously supported healthy retail improvements. Most recently, the city adopted a healthy retail policy this past summer in which corner stores are involved in transforming the look and feel of stores to improve access to healthy fruit and vegetables and improving food options in city-owned facilities. Their hard work has resulted in the city of Baldwin Park adopting the first of its kind in the state of California in the administrative policy that will provide local corner store owners incentives to offer and promote healthier foods and beverage options, as well as limit exposure to negative advertising and adjust floor plans to encourage healthy food. In addition, our honorees have also provided input into the Baldwin Park Unified School District breakfast, snack, and lunch menu to provide healthy yet tasty breakfast snack options in our school. So it is for these, amongst other many achievements that we'd like to, it's our honor to present our, these Guardian of Health Awards to them both. And we also had honor, a recognition event in LA, in Los Angeles at Homeboy Industries in November in which we honored Alfredo and Maria as well as other guardians of health in the state of California. So I'd like to invite Adan Duarte, who's our local policy assistant and who works very closely with the residents in Baldwin Park and in the community-based projects to provide the awards. And we'd also like to invite the residents, if it's okay to, if we could do a photo, we do have.
Absolutely. We'll definitely do it up here because we have certificates as well.
Okay, so first, we'd like to bring up Maria Gonzalez.
Okay, Maria, come on up here. Maria, come on up here. Okay, go ahead.
And then we'd also like to bring up Alfredo Orozco.
Alright, we also have a certificate that reads in, for both Maria Gonzalez and Alfredo Orozco, a recognition of your collaboration and dedication to the residents and community members of Baldwin Park. We appreciate your commitment to improving and making healthy changes for the betterment of children and adults in our community. Thank you for your favorable recognition on behalf of the councilmembers. Thank you, Maria. Oh Manny, don't get my camera. Hold on. So, do you want to say some words?
I just want to say thank you to the city of Baldwin Park for giving me the opportunity to serve it to the community. And I need some more people to involve in this, in these plans. You're welcome. You wanted to involve in this one, you can connect to Christina Cardenas. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you and thank you for all the opportunity for us to grow and learn more about. If anybody knows me more is that I love to learn anything I can possibly learn. Thank you.
I'd like to share a few words, Maria and Alfredo. I think you guys have always done an outstanding job. I see you at all the meetings and you're always giving a lot of input. I know it takes a lot of time and effort, but you really deserve this recognition and thank you for participating in our community.
Thank you. Now, before I forget, we get an opportunity, there's actually a book called Food, Inc., and a documentary that they're in, and it features Baldwin Park, the market in Los Angeles. It's called La Blanquita. That's where, that's right. So just want to let everyone know, it's very educational. Norm, I didn't see you over there. What's up, girl? Alright, so this one, let's get our picture going here. Come on. Alright, thank you very much. One more. Yes, 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 yes. Is he running for office? Okay, alright, let's go. Thank you, Christina. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Alrighty, then the next one that we have is a presentation, certificate of recognition to the Tough Kids Wrestling Club in honor of its success at the 2015, let me see, the league championship and US state tournament. Are these individuals here? Bring them on in. We're going to bring them up to the front here. I'll call their names out. Yes, sir. Okay, alright, I'll have the attorney. Let's have the attorney. Yeah, you know what? Yeah, let's bring them in here. If we're going to call their name, come up here with the certificate.
All of you guys smile. Devin, everybody look straight over there. Smile.
You guys ready? Alright, here, this, this, we're going to call out the, wow, look at this. Who's got the belt? Wow. First of all, congratulate each and every one of you. Is everyone excited? What we're going to do, just to let everyone know, we're going to place you in our little city newsletter so that all the residents know about this great team. And we're also going to put everyone's name, will put everyone's name out there, Manny?
Yes.
Put everyone's name on the sign right in front of the park. So you'll see your name there sometime tomorrow in the afternoon. But this one, we're going to call out the names for the certificates. Who's the first one? Eliana Asaro. Enrique Segura. Sean Torres. Luis Salazar. Maya Lassaro. Felicit, uh, Márquez. Sean Torres, did we call Sean already? Andrew Salazar. Okay, Carlos Sanchez. So you want that belt?
Yes.
Okay, Matthew Reyes. Luis Nardoz. Nathaniel Colani. You ready, Russell? Russell? How old are you?
Oh, how cute.
Zom Lopez. Zom Lopez. Zom Lopez. Oh, sorry. Valdez. Andrew Rodriguez. Andrew Rodriguez. Thank you. Cruz. Cruz. Don't we have a Cruz on our screen? Anthony, you said, should I name it? Did I pronounce that correctly? Is it here? Is it here? Okay, they're all wrestling. Lilani Cruz. What's your name? Cruz.
My first name is Cruz. Oh, that is true.
John Sacks and Dawson.
Audrey.
Audrey Segura. Michael Leguia. Kristen Torres. Victor Mejia. Joshua Young. Zachary Mirada. Not here? They're all wrestling. Okay, Mark Perez. Ignacio Vázquez. Not here.
Am I blocking you here?
Jacob Reyes. Sofia George Masaro. Not here? Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh my gosh, she's a little tiny one.
Bring her over here, bring her over here.
Little tiny, what if one of these kids just dropped Manny to the ground?
Gabriel Orozco. Great. Oh, go. Gabriel Salazar. Gabriel?
He's not here.
He's not wrestling. Okay, not here. Okay, Roy Masario. Oh, oh. Okay. Robert Quinones. So Robert Quinones. Alex Coach. Coach. Lopez, Coach. Correct. Not here? Oh, that's your dad. Give it to your dad. Tell him, tell him we missed him, okay? Tony Sanchez. Okay, the next one, Manuel Lozano. Oh, no, I'm just kidding. Veronca Serano. Okay, we're going to get a big picture, you guys, so let's do that.
Everybody slide up. Everybody slide.
Everyone over here. Come on over here, everyone. Let's go. Let's go. Let's get everyone over here, please. Okay, we're going to make sure. Ready?
Oh, he's covering his face.
Oh, oh, hold on. Here, get over here. Come on here.
Alright, I'm right here. You can cover the mayor's face.
Oh, Manny, he's covering my face.
Yeah, I see the dog.
Ready? Okay, here we go. Everybody look up here. Here we go.
You're going to hold the pose. Okay, we're looking good. Hold it. One, two. Take a few. Hold it. Hold it. Last one. Hey there, right now, I'm going to have all the city council members walk out of the photo so we can. Baldwin Park now. Next now will be, oh, now June 1st. According to June 1st.
I see your certificates. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, look over here. Look over here. These cameras, one, two, hold it. Two, hold it.
Sure. Stay right there. Stay right there.
Okay, I'm going to have you talk about the program. I'm going to carry you. Ready? One, two, three. Okay, we're going to get a picture here. Make sure you don't fall. That's all I need to laugh. Coach, do it one more. Okay, hold on. Where's that? Hold on, where's the mic camera? Hold it, Manny.
Okay, we'll take a few pictures. Okay, count three. One, two, and hold it. One more. One, two, and. Thank you.
Hey, come on up here.
Okay.
Okay, Gray's going to give us a little background on the. Gray's going to give us a little background about the events.
Hello, my name is Gregor Roscoe. I'm the president of Tough Kids Wrestling Program. The program's been in Baldwin Park. This year's our 15th year. We have approximately 18 state champions over the last 15 years. This year, we had a very good turnout. This, our first league championship for CAGW, which is our league in Southern California. We took the league championship for small clubs. We also had state champions, boys and girls. We had a girl, Lilani Lozaro, as state champion this year. She placed third last year. She's a state champion this year. We had our youngest state chan, uh, state placer, Nate Salario, placed seventh at state as a four-year-old in the five and six-year-old division. Great success there. Our program has fused, uh, Baldwin Park High School's wrestling program as long, and as well as the Sierra Vista Wrestling Program. And we've have about 18 of our tough kids that come out of our program in college with wrestling scholarships. So the program's designed to help the kids get ready for high school, learn the sport of wrestling, but also instill that their grades, we're the only program in Southern California that requires grades. And the kids know it. They don't bring their report cards or they don't have their homework done. They go home and do it, or they do it right there on the mat. And our program's. And our program's very successful, and we hope to keep it going for the next 15 years or more, uh, as these kids grow into it, and, uh, hopefully these kids come back and help us coach in the near future.
Thank you, real, real quick. I wanna explain how, explain to us how Carlos ended up with the actual belt.
Okay.
Carlos Sanchez.
So, Carlos wrestled, we have weekly tournaments, and they have a Dominator Series. So, as you, as you, uh, place in each tournament, uh, first place with so many pins, you get a thousand points, uh, second place, eight hundred, and so on, and so on, and so on. Uh, so at the end of the series, the Dominator Series, in his age division, uh, uh, nine, 10-year-old division, he placed with eighty-six hundred points, and that was the highest for his division, so this is called the Dominator Belt, the Dominator Series. So, it's an equivalent of eight tournaments in two months, as many points as you can get, whoever has the most points gets the Dominator Belt. So, he's a Dominator Champion.
Andy, so what, do for you Carlos, make sure we put like a little se- separate segment for Carlos because of the championship belt that he's got, okay? Thank you, give me five, buddy. Did you want to say anything?
No, I just said, you know, the ones that I, like I said, the state placers, they have these little bears with them, uh, boys and girls, we have, uh, the state, the state placers, uh, Lilani first place, uh, Enrique's first place, kid's over here, he's also won the California Public Championship, which is a, a compass of about seven states that are a bar- part of the California public, he won that championship this year. Uh, Juliette, uh, Salazar, first-year girl wrestling at, in the girls' state tournament, placed second. Uh, Samaya Lozaro, uh, first-year wrestler, wrestling with us, placed the third at the girls' tournament, and, uh, we have more placers to come, uh, than years to come too here, so.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Greg, wanna, wanna thank, wanna thank each and every one of you, what you've done here is excellent, you've made this city council very proud, so continue doing what you're doing, at the same time, make sure that in school, you're doing just as good. Thank you on behalf of the city ballpark, appreciate that. Oh, yeah, you know what, if you want me to try it out, I better. Let's hook it up. Andy, do we have my camera?
And also thank you to all the coaches, and the parents, of course, that, that make sure that these kids are, are at the practices, and to the tournaments, and make sure they do their homework, so that they can stay in the program. Congratulations to the parents, as well as the, the coaches. Thank you so very much.
Can I hear you, Mayor? Hey, you know that? Uh, oh, with the audience, yeah, yeah. Yes. Come on, come on, let's get, let's... Well, I have to get up here. Hold on. Hold on, front. Don't worry about it, here. Okay, here we go. You guys ready? Make sure everything's in there, right?
One, two, and hold it.
Everybody, hips straight.
Look over here.
Audrey, look over here, Mina.
Last one.
Okay, last one, you guys.
Enriquez, put your hands up.
Mayor Lozano, you can still hand in your application to join the next season. Whoa.
If you see our state gear?
Tessie?
If you see our ta- state gear, these kids that have the sublimated uniforms here, uh, we, we teamed up this year, uh, starting as our, at our state event, uh, on their, on their singlets, they have state team, Ball and Park, uh, with a star on it, but also on their left leg, they have, uh, the real, uh, Tough Kids Fight at St. Jude's, we have a St. Jude's program, we started, every pin that we get, we donate a dollar to St. Jude's, and, uh, we get a lot of them, because we overhead over a thousand wins this season, so.
Awesome.
Uh, that's a, a new program we started with St. Jude's.
Thank you, thank you very much, Greg. That's Carlos.
Coach, I, I also just wanna thank you and your team for all that you do in our community, um, I, and also the parents, I mean, just seeing these kids, how well behaved they are here tonight.
Yes.
Uh, it's a real testament to you guys being examples. Thank you so much for representing us, uh, on a region, uh, you know, in the region and on a statewide, um, you know, scale, and for representing us so positively, so just wanna comment on that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. You know what, at this point, I just wanna also, um, congratulate these kids for doing an outstanding job, representing the city well, uh, you guys are exemplary examples to our kids, and also, if we could tell, we could put them on our billboard, you know, get a picture of them, and, and place it on the next billboard that we get an opportunity. Did we use that already? Okay. Alright, that sounds good, thanks. But we'll get it again, though. Alright, alright, so the next, go ahead, alright, so the ne- the next, uh, presentation that we have, or, let's go ahead and allow the kids to go out. I'm gonna have, uh, uh, Dr. Taylor. You wanna do the intro? Before we get... I'm gonna have you do the intro.
When, when, do we have a little violin, or you're gonna read something out?
Uh, Davis started in ninety-two.
You met him in ninety-two. So, alrighty. So, did you wanna cover that? Alright, then let's do, here, I'll give you the mic.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Excellent.
I gotta get a picture with you then, PhD.
Alrighty, wanna, first of all, thank everyone, uh, this evening, at this point, today, uh, it's a historical, uh, time for us in the city ballpark, of course, because one of our captains, uh, David Reynoso, who's been with the Ball and Park Police Department since nineteen ninety, uh, has been appointed as a chief for the city of Elmani, and he will actually be leading one of the largest police departments within our immediate area of the San Gabriel Valley, so it's very important for us. So, at this time, I will also acknowledge that our current chief, uh, Mike Taylor, is now a PhD, so it's Doctor Taylor, and chief as well, so he'll give us a little intro of Mr. David Reynoso, Captain David Reynoso.
David, come on up, will ya?
Come on up, dude, he says.
You know, uh, Mr. Mayor, David comes from a long lineage of chiefs that come from our organization, just so you know. I was talking to a former captain, Dan Higginbotham, who was the chief of Murrieta, he said he sat at a meeting in Orange County with eleven other chiefs when he was made chief, and he knew every one of them, they were all former Ball and Park captains. I just counted off the top of my head, eight chiefs in Southern California that I know that have been local, Costa Mesa, Beverly Hills, Murrieta, uh...
Atlanta.
Atlanta, uh, uh, Lam, or, um, La Marada, I mean, you could just...
Beverly Hills.
You can go on, and, yeah, there's a ton of them. They come from Ball and Park, it's because we really, I personally think that we make some of the best officers in the state of California, if not across the nation, and David is representative of that. Just so you know, David's been a SWAT commander for years, he went to the FBI Academy, which I went to, uh, he's got a master's degree, he's got tons of years of experience. Dave, you been on the department for what, about twenty-seven years now?
Uh, January nineteen ninety.
Yes, so, he's got a tremendous amount of experience with our department back in the detective bureau, he's worked diverse, a bunch of assignments, he's been in charge of our boot camp since its inception, he's been to every one of the boot camps. Not only does David have a master's degree, he's also a teacher, he's a certified teacher, he teaches at some of the colleges, uh, there's a whole host of things, I could go on for hours and days, but, you know, David's really a very humble guy, he didn't really wanna do any of this, so, uh, we kinda set it up for him, to where we're gonna bring him in. He doesn't talk a lot about himself, but he's one of those, uh, quiet, strong people. He's always been in the background, he's, he's been a tremendous asset for me, and a personal friend. I was very proud to be able to promote him to the rank of captain, so well deserved, uh, I can't, uh, I can't talk enough about him. I'm really sorry to see him go, it's kind of a bitter sweet, for two reasons. Uh, one, I hate to see him leave, he's a tremendous asset to the organization, uh, he's my personal friend, long time, uh, but the other, uh, the sweet part of it is, for him, is that, uh, he's getting a great career over there, a great opportunity with a fine agency, that has a long, uh, sister, uh, if you wanna call it that, relationship with us. We're gonna have a great working relationship of our neighboring city next door, they're getting an excellent person to run their department, uh, he comes extremely well-qualified, as I told you, he's really, uh, uh, an inspiration to the troops at the department, he's a, what I call a natural leader, he has natural leadership abilities, uh, it's just tremendous. And plus, I'm gonna have a friend across the wash, which is, uh, really nice, somebody that I can call and rely on for help. You're gonna see Elmani and our police department working a lot closer together now that we have a friend over there. Uh, David's family, David grew up in Ball and Park, he's a former Marine, he served our country. His family still lives in Ball and Park, and he visits them quite regularly, uh, he has a lot of family in Ball and Park. Uh, I told him to just hang around for a couple more years, but, uh, you know, opportunity knocks on the door, you take it. Uh, I congratulate him, I'm sorry to see him go, but I'm happy for him at the same time. I know his, uh, wife and two lovely daughters are extremely proud of him, unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight, uh, but, again, the department really hates to see you go, Dave, and with that, uh, the mayor has a, uh, has a plaque, and he's going to, uh, say some words and probably read from it, Dave.
Yeah, be- before, before you come up here, just wanna, first of all, uh, it was an honor, uh, for me and a privilege, uh, to be able to meet you. I met, um, police officer, um, Reynoso in nineteen ninety-two, when Fidel Vargas came in as the youngest mayor, um, his brother, Frank Reynoso, also come in, came in as a law enforcement officer, and went on, is he with the DEA, or?
Orange County.
Orange County District Attorney's Office. Uh, so, there is a background, and for one, he's a product of the city ballpark, believe he graduated from Sierra Vista, Sierra Vista High School, um, he, I believe, will be the youngest chief at the age of forty-eight years old. So, it's an opportunity that you can't miss, and just a little history about him as well, the city of Irwindale also courted him, uh, remember both, he and I spoke, talked about that, and it's interesting, the fact, the decision that he made to remain here, despite the ha- the fact, having that opportunity, and, and for me, I'm really enthusiastic, because it's gonna be an opportunity of a lifetime, uh, there is no doubt that you have leadership ability, that you're compassionate person, and that believes in the organization, and you have been a part of this great department, and I did not get an opportunity, uh, to return the callback, uh, to the Tribune, that's why you didn't see me in there in the comments, and that's why I'm saying it here. Uh, I wanna thank you very much, and all the residents, uh, and again, what's so important about it is that you're going next door, but you're an individual that will understand the community based upon the community that you grew up, and you're also taking major tools and support from this great department that you were a part of, and that you helped build, and now you have that great opportunity that very few have the honor and the privilege to serve, and I am extremely proud of you, I know that your mother, uh, and your brothers and sisters are as well. So, I wanna wish you the best, and, uh, and I know, and I'm extremely confident that you will lead that police department in a mi- very positive way, because you have shown what you, what you're capable of doing in Ball and Park, and as was mentioned by our chief, that we have a multitude of different chiefs, uh, throughout, throughout the county that are from Ball and Park, so that says a lot. And I believe the, 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 the longest-serving chief, uh, is, uh, Chief Snowden, that served here at one time, back in the mid-seventies, and he's currently the chief, and the longest-serving chief in the city of Beverly Hills, so that does say a lot, uh, about the city ballpark, and the type of products, uh, that we produce here, and go on to bigger and brighter opportunities. So, on behalf of the city ballpark and, and mayor of Ball and Park, thank you very much, we wish you the best. This one might like the other, council, go ahead. Have the other...
Mayor?
Council member say words before we present the plaque. Yes, Vice Mayor Cruzbaca.
Um, David, I'm gonna call you David instead of chief, I'll call you chief in a few days. I just wanna say, I am extremely saddened to see you leave, however, with a happy heart, that this is a step for you in the future, that I know you've worked so hard for, I know we are so proud of you, that you are a product of Ball and Park, along with your family, and you make all of us proud to say that you're from Ball and Park. Thank you so very much for the years that you passionately helped our community, thank you for being in the forefront of helping with the checkpoints, understanding our undocumented residents, as well as helping us get through a lot of difficult times, thank you so very much, and mucha suerte para todo tu futuro.
That's it, thank you. Uh, Mayor? Yes, council. Captain Reynoso, just wanna thank you for the many years that you've been here supporting our, our community, I appreciate all the hard work you do, what I admire about you is that you put a lot of heart into everything you do, you really give your best when you do something, like when you took on the Pride Platoon, and how you carried it, you, just all the programs that you do, I know you do your very best, and I know that we don't have to turn back around to see how the program's going, because I know when you're under it, it's just being executed well, and you could tell by the, the individuals that are being served on that program, how they come across, and how they, they really enjoy working with you. I know a lot of people in the community, they asked me, they, they saw you in the paper, that you're, uh, moving forward, and, and, but they really appreciate you, a lot of people talk very highly, uh, about you and your efforts as, as a police officer here in our community, I know that, uh, I guess you grew up near Walnut Creek Park, I know it was, one time I was walking through, I met, I had the opportunity, the, uh, to meet your family, your mother, and you just come from some great roots, and you can tell you're just an outstanding person, and an exemplary, uh, police officer and captain, I know you're gonna do, be a great chief, uh, in your new work, so we'll keep in touch as a community, and I know we'll be working with you, and a lot, as we come forward, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, as council member, Monica Harsia.
Thank you, Mayor, well, first of all, congratulations to you, so excited for you for this new chapter, it's an exciting one, and as has been mentioned here, uh, what an opportunity of a lifetime, so congratulations, uh, the way that I interacted with you, and I think the way, the, the greatest impression that you left on me was, uh, the time with the Pride Platoon, and seeing you connect with the youth of our community, um, I really appreciated that about you, you know, you, uh, weren't afraid to really embrace this community, because you are a son of Ball and Park, and you recognize that, and so, definitely wanna thank you for your commitment to these youth, um, don't forget that as you continue on, um, you know, that's, we always have to remember where we came from, uh, and clearly you have, uh, clearly you have shown a commitment to, to this community, um, and so I know going on to Elmani, you, you won't forget us here, and you'll continue to, uh, have that commitment to our youth, to at-risk youth in the region, I'm sure, and, um, just staying true to your car mission, so congratulations, very excited for you, very proud, thank you.
Uh, before, uh, before the mayor reads the plaque, I wanted to say one more thing about David, just to show you the kinda guy he is, uh, you know, normally when you accept a position, he starts Monday as the chief of police for Elmani, by the way, uh, before you accept a position, usually you have like, uh, two-week notice, you're gonna take those two weeks off, spend time for your family, get things ready, uh, well, David decided not to do that, he had made a certain commitment, every year, we have a Baker to Vegas Run, it's about a thirty-year-old program, started in California, expanded nationally, and now it's internationally, and it's a big charity event, where all of law enforcement across the world comes together for a weekend, and they make a run from Baker to Vegas, there's twenty legs. David had committed to running one of the legs, and I told him, you know, you don't have to hold on to that commitment, he goes, "No, I made that commitment, I'm gonna do it." He goes to Baker to Vegas, and he knew that I was in my doctorate program, I did my, uh, defense last night, so I had to take Monday and Tuesday off, and I, and he goes, "I'm gonna be here Monday and Tuesday for you." And I said, "No, no, no, go ahead and take it off, I'll figure something else out that we can do," he goes, "No." So, he ran Baker to Vegas, drove back on Sunday, after he did his long run, worked here Monday and Tuesday, just for me, so I could do my defense and get my doctorate, and then he's here today, and he starts Monday, so that's the kinda guy he is, when he gives his word, he sticks to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Alrighty. Let me read this, or, actually, come on up, come on up. Alright, here is a plaque, uh, that reads, Captain David R. Reynoso, Ball and Park Police Department, nineteen ninety, twenty fifteen. In recognition and appreciation of your twenty-five years of unending dedication, commitment, and leadership to the Ball and Park Police Department, city council, citizens, and the entire San Gabriel Valley, you have been an asset to your department, colleagues, and entire community, we wish you success in your future endeavors. On behalf of the city ballpark, the plaque, the symbol, thank you. Thank you, David. Take the pictures after, he's gonna say some words.
Mayor, members of the city council, or residents, I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart, I wanna thank you for the opportunity I was given here twenty-five years ago. I wanna thank you for the opportunity I was given here 25 years ago to pursue my chosen profession. I learned so much about the character, the good character of human life from this city, from everyone here and all residents with my everyday interactions. You know, when I started, Baldwin Park had a reputation, you know, maybe not so good, but then when I started working, I realized, you know what? It's not deserved. This city has 99% of the people in this city are good. It's that very small percentage that make the newspaper, that give the city a bad name. Very tiny, small percentage. Less than 1%. So, this is a good city with even better people. So, I've been so proud to serve beside you and with you. So, with that, you know, I'll take these lessons I learned about life, about human character with me to the city of Almani. I'll do the best I can over there to make you proud and regret giving me the opportunity to serve this city 25 years ago. Thank you.
Not too late to change your mind, Dave. Let's get it, everyone. Then we'll take one separate. Take a few pictures first. Right over here, one, two. Do, hold it, one, two. Do it separate. Then I'll get one separate. You wanna do it by yourself, the partner?
Yeah.
At three, one, two. Do it with my cameras on?
Sure.
I gotta put this on my visor when I go through Almani.
I thought he was gonna wait.
One, two, ah.
Honey, can you? I'm Eddie.
Put the part here, please.
Do it with my camera.
The quality of my camera.
Hold on. Monica, we're gonna do it one more time.
I got something in my eye.
Start Monday, huh?
Monday, yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
A couple of days.
Yeah, let's go. All righty, okay, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the agenda. This, excuse me, the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lozano.
Hey.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Cruzbaca, councilmembers, city staff, and guests. I'm here with my colleague and dear friend and energetic friends of the, president of the Friends of the Baldwin Park Library. We have an announcement to make to you, but before that, I'm Rafael Gonzalez. I'm the manager of the recently refurbished Baldwin Park Library. I wanted to give you just a brief update about staff, some of the services, and some of the programs. We have a new children's librarian, Angie Macias, coming to us from the Downey City Public Library. She has been with us since mid-January. We're offering a weekly toddler storytime, which is becoming very, very popular. There's a lot of the services that we offer at the library. We offer that every Tuesday at 11:30 a.m. We have a second grade, second grade class visits, visiting the library every Friday. Some of the students are receiving their library cards for the first time, they receive orientation and storytime. Can we make that announcement? So, our Friends of the Baldwin Park Library.
We are conducting the, twice a year, we have a big book and bake sale that is our source of income to supply the library with books and programs for the children and supplies. And it is coming up April 11th, April 14th, and April 15th, and you get great, great bargains in books. We have collectors that come the first thing in the morning, the first day, and walk out with boxes of books. And you're welcome. We also have the goodies to sell, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really, really appreciate your support, Mayor Lozano, councilmembers. And Manny, I wanna thank you and your staff, as you do every six months, and with other things as well, but we appreciate the support that you give us. I'll be in touch with you regarding maybe helping us publicize the event on the market. I also wanted to mention some other events that are coming up. One thing that we didn't mention is that the funds that we raised with the book sale, you know, come back to the library. We purchased new books, new children's books, we paid for newspaper subscriptions, and it helps pay for some of the programs, such as the summer reading programs. Next Tuesday, April 7th, we're gonna have a special program. It's called Spreading Positivity. This is a program geared at teens. This is to kinda help them develop a more positive outlook of life. The program will be conducted by high school student Joanna Wah. She's a Temple City High School student. So, we're hoping to attract a lot of students. We're giving it a lot of publicity in the library. On April 22nd at 6:00 p.m., we're gonna have Coffee with the Authors, featuring local authors, for example, Soledad Tobar Cruz, whom you know, Michelle Rivera, and others. So, we hope we have a good turnout as well. On April 25th, we're gonna be having the special storytime in honor of Dia de los Neos. And Mayor Lozano, as you've done in the past, we've invited you, and I hope you can join us again this time, April 25th. It's a Saturday, and it's gonna be at 11:00 a.m. I'll email you.
Ay, nos vemos.
Ay, nos vemos. Okay, sounds good. Finally, on May 23rd, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a boxing author and businessman, Jean Aguilera, who will present his book, Mexican-American Boxing in Los Angeles. You know, please come out and support the library, services, and programs. And Mayor Lozano, we have a study room, you know, waiting for you.
Which I use it all the time, by the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Oh, Mariana Lake, I haven't seen her in a while. Hello, Mariana.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And member of the council, staff, and member of the community. I approached this opportunity to say, also congratulate all the program that you just congratulated, especially the kid. And also, official Reynoso, Captain Reynoso, that I know him, that I have acknowledged for 25 years that I know him. And he really cared about children, about our city, and I know we're gonna miss him. I wish the best, and I know he doesn't go so far, he gonna be a neighbor, but I wish the best to the best to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jesse Mercia. I'm an account manager at Warner Brothers. This is my first time being here, so I'm not really sure how this goes, but the reason why I'm here is because I wanted to see if I can get a little bit more help in the park of Shire Park. I'm a resident in La Puente, but it's the borderline of La Puente and Baldwin Park. The Shire Park is right in front of us, and unfortunately, I've been trying to get some help since last August. I've been trying to call the city of Baldwin Park, I've been transported to different people. And with that being said, just, I got transferred from one location to the other location and got told that things were gonna get fixed, when I mean by fixed, pretty much the lights in Baldwin Park. We used to have lights in the Baldwin Park, not all of them working, but, meaning, all of them used to turn on for the baseball field, but as far as at least on and having lights on that park, two lights used to be on in each pole by the dugouts. And unfortunately, that's not the case now. It's completely dark. We've gotten our house, our house actually robbed, next-door neighbor's house is robbed. I had to actually get video, video cameras placed outside my house in order to feel somewhat safe and trying to see what things conspired there. Right now, if you, if, for example, if a police officer goes by today, you would go and you would see homeless people living in that park. They have everything there, they have their beds, they have basically a place to sleep. The reason why I haven't called it in is because I wanted to take the time to talk, and obviously, that way the officer, whoever ends up going there can take a look and obviously see that I'm not lying. But I really think it's really important, my mom has got her vehicle broken into as well. We have a bunch of juveniles go there, it's dark, they see a great area to go and, you know, smoke their drugs, do what they gotta do, tag, vandalize. We used to have that problem. I would call the cops, and at first, we were having a little bit of problem with the cops, but then they started helping out much more. And as well as, now we're having the problem that we used to have motor vehicles, campers sleep in front of the park. And now, like I said before, now they don't have these vehicles there. Now, we have actual people sleeping in back of the, I would call it, the snack bar. And I really do think, like I said, this has been since August, I was pretty much calling the city, and I kept calling, emails were sent out. The reason why I never attended, unfortunately, I was busy. I have a family myself, you know, I have work and I have, you know, my family to have to concentrate on, but...
Okay, all right, you know, the time's up. Manny Carrillo, can you make sure that we get together with the gentleman? Mr. Carrillo?
Yes.
Reference to the park. And then, of course, that's part of Basset, so the actual property itself, city of Baldwin Park, and I guess we kind of interact with the sheriffs and the Baldwin Park Police Department as well.
Right.
As far as the homes themselves, of course, that's the Sheriff's Department.
Correct.
Area, but we definitely will work with you. I was out there about three weeks ago, and I noticed they took our plaque.
Correct, that's another thing. They took our plaque as well.
I saw that. It's no longer in existence there, so let me have you meet with Manny, and then Manny will report back to the city council what transpires. And Manny, see if you can get his number for me as well, okay? All right, thank you very much. Commander, before you come up here, which obviously you wanna speak, we are going to be addressing the various options that are available on consent calendar that I will be pulling, so we could discuss. So, just to let you know, okay? There are options. So, do you wanna wait until that time?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just, real quick. Thank you. We're just, all right, thank you. Mr. Luna.
Hello, city council, Baldwin Park residents. On behalf of the Baldwin Park residents and citizens, I would, I would like Garcia, Pacheco, and Mr. Lozano immediately resign for sign from the city, from the Baldwin Park City Council for voting for the support of the Monobello project. This project has no direct income, except what they can get from the state and the federal government. They pay themselves first, and they leave the residents of Baldwin Park millions of dollars in debt. You three people are gonna get us in debt, one, two, and three. You people do not work for the city of Baldwin Park, you work for yourselves. One, two, three. You should be ashamed of yourself for calling yourself city council members and a mayor. You don't have the right to give Baldwin Park residents stuff away, and you do it constantly. What's the matter with you three? This company, Monobello Group, is federally, they are exempted. So, they get the money from the federal government or the state, and then they leave you people and all of us Baldwin Park residents in debt. Not only a few thousand dollars, millions of dollars, and you guys sit there and do it. What's the matter with you three? You don't think, or I'll tell you what, you don't care. You don't care, you don't either, and neither do you. You're too busy giving the city away, you're too busy shaking everybody's hand, hoping that they, you make them happy, and you never hear. I don't know how in the world you people ever got into office, I really don't. Because of this Monobello project, mentioned above, you three should resign, 'cause this city gets nothing in return from this Monobello project. I bet, I can ask you now, and you, you, and you cannot come up and tell me, this is the amount of money we're gonna make off of this project, 'cause if you do, I think you're lying. Mr. Pacheco, Lozano, and Garcia, you're a shameful group in front of the residents of Baldwin Park and for the people you work with. If I was up there, I'd be yelling at you, which I'm pretty sure other people have. You're a shameful group, and I'm looking at the three of you. And those residents out there, when they get this enormous amount of money bill from the project, Monobello, we should come looking for you three to pay for it.
All right, okay, thank you.
I know, there goes my three damn minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I will comment to be able to address that issue. All right, thank you.
Thomas Carey. No, then, wasn't there another chief too? He went to Ontario.
Oh, Rialto.
Rialto?
Yes, Dr. Kling.
There was another one, though, that went to Ontario or someplace like that, I thought. Anyway. Last time I was here, I spoke about a certain attorney that likes to, you know, fleece the city and its taxpayers. I won't give him the pleasure of mentioning him by name, we know who we mean. I have a title for him now. They call it a sociopath. Look that up, Google that, the 10 warning signs of that. You'll find it very interesting. You may wanna get this person, if you wanna call him that, away from the youth. These type of people are, get like a cult following. You don't want that. They have bad influence. All you gotta do is look at Jim Jones and a few others in the past. This person is obviously jealous of people who make more money, Manny O'Carroll over there and the others here. He's trying to sue his way up to that level. The city, though, needs to turn over those documents to put a stop to it, and if they gather judgment, they need to pay it, so that they don't have to pay any more interest on that. But the, this needs to stop. This person is clearly a nut job, if you wanna say, 'cause that's what it says there under that. It's spelled S-O-C-I-O-P-A-T-H. You can Google that, and face for, there's 10, it says there's 10 red flags of that, and he has eight of those 10. So, that's the only place I can speak about this, to warn you about it. Of course, you know, I'm not, I wish I still lived here, only so I could roast him every time I find him somewhere bragging and boasting. He, he's on that blog, doing those things, and accusing people, calling people names. I guess he's hanging around those teenagers too much. I don't know why he isn't hanging around his own peers, maybe because they see through him. Person that is 32-years-old should be hanging around people that are, you know, roughly 30 or so, not 16 or younger. There's something wrong with a person that does that, and spends all their time writing and condemning Baldwin Park. If he doesn't like Baldwin Park, he should move and go somewhere else. He's got easy pickings here.
May I have three minutes?
Oh, that is a quick three minutes. I must've been too long to lay off. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Okay, anyone else?
One of the things I gotta give Dan Walz, that neighbor said, "Thank you for all the things you have been doing." I gave Dan last week some pictures from the water runoff that we're having at Walnut Creek in Baldwin Park Boulevard, okay? I talked to Channel 5, and they said that Upper San Gabriel Valley don't wanna do what the state wants, okay? So, we're gonna get and send those pictures to Governor Brown. I just want you guys to be aware of it, okay? If you have a... I gave Dan last week, uh, some pictures from the water runoff that we're having at Walnut Creek, uh, in Baldwin Park Boulevard. Okay? I talked to Channel Five and they said that, uh, Upper St. Gabriel Valley, they wanna do what the state wants. Okay? So we're gonna get and send those pictures to Governor Brown. I just want you guys to be aware of it. Okay? If you have a crew tomorrow from the news media right there in Baldwin Park, you'll know why. Okay? It's been going off for over a month, I would say. Millions of gallons just running down the river. Okay? And it's something that, uh, Governor Brown just came out today saying that we're gonna have to cut twenty-five percent on water. You know, and it's something that, uh, we have to be aware of it. I know we're going after the citizens, uh, keeping up their grass and stuff like that, but you can't afford it no more. But we're gonna start seeing a lot of houses that their grass is not green or stuff like that. But, uh, I just want you guys to be aware of what, where I'm going with this. I'm gonna try and get ahold of Roger tomorrow, Roger Hernandez, or Ed Hernandez, and give him the pictures too. They're very close to Governor Brown. Yeah? But, uh, but thank you, Dan, for all the work. You know, I called you out and let you know what's happening. Another thing, um, park commissioner, stuff like that, but at the same time, Manny, I wish we could change the hours. There's a lot of the girls there in the commission. They get off at five and that time they, I mean, they, we could change it probably to six, six-thirty. You know, five o'clock is too early for them. Yeah? So look into that, you know? And I have another booklet together for the commission for next Monday of what Little Lake requires for anybody playing in the school grounds or the parks they have to have. Okay? I'm gonna give it to you on Monday, uh, next Monday and all the commissioners so they can see what I'm talking about. I did my studies, my walkthrough with West Covina.
Mayor, that's three minutes.
All righty. Okay.
We go again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. We're along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. If not, I will now declare the public communication closed. I just wanna, wanna first of all, just kind of clarify something. Anyone could come up here. The state of California's constitution, for that matter, the United States Constitution allows anyone to come up here and literally falsify the information. The gentleman that's exiting now, he falsified everything he said. Ninety-nine point nine percent of what he said is false information. Number one, no one here on this city council has given anyone any type of land. There's documentation. What the individual needs to do is come into city hall and do his research. It's, 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 it's sad. Of course, he walks away and that's what individuals usually do and they don't like to be clarified that they're falsifying information. Now, I don't need to speak on behalf of the council members' names that were just mentioned because they are doing good for this city as all of us five are and, uh, we're pulling through. But that's the unfortunate part that occurs. When I say ninety-nine percent of it was false information, that one percent he got right was our names. That's it. So I just want to let everyone know for the record. And it's unfortunate, but you have a lot of individuals, several, uh, that come in here and do the same thing, meeting after meeting, meeting after meeting. So again, if you want to go here or anywhere else, you could outright accuse that council member or that mayor or that senator or president, whatever you can, an outright lying son of a whatever, and you're protected by the United States Constitution. I love it, but that's the price you pay for sitting here and being elected as well. All right. So I'll end on that part. At this point, cause I want to get out of here before eleven o'clock if we can, uh...
Mayor, really quick. Mr. Rios reminded me, I, you know, as you drive through the city at night, you'll often see, um, kind of the water flowing, geysers in some places. Um, I actually will drive down Baldwin Park Boulevard sometimes to get my car washed. So, uh, you know, let's set the example here in the city and conserve water wherever we can. If we can do an assessment of, you know, some of these, I don't know, you know, what is it? Sprinklers or water sources and make sure that, you know, we really have a good, a good, um, control over them. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go into consent calendars. I want you to go ahead and pull out, uh, item number six, which is the update, uh, the proposed wireless communication facility at forty-seven twenty-five Main Avenue. Council members wishing to pull any other items?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I'd like to pull number five for, uh, future, future consideration and also for discussion.
All righty. Very good. Is there a motion to, uh, for approval of consent calendars, items one through, uh, six?
Uh, approval of items...
Excuse me. With the exception of five and six.
Approval of items, uh, one through eight with the exception of items five and six.
I'll second.
Okay. Hold on. Correction, because the others are at a public hearing. So it's just consent calendars that, uh...
I, one through six.
One through six. Right. But we're, with the exception.
A five.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you, council member. Does the motion, second?
Second.
Any objections? See none. So move. All right. So item number five requested by Vice Mayor Cruz Baca, the approved proposal with revenues and costs specialist LLC to provide a comprehensive FEED study. Yes?
Um, I would like to, uh, be able to sit down with staff and also bring it back to the council for consideration. There has been a vendor that we've been working with for a while that's willing to come in and save us some costs, uh, as far as how much it would cost. And I would like to be able to make that presentation at a later council meeting.
All right. So Mayor, may I ask, what, what would be the, um, the impact if we don't do this FEED study right now? Would there be any?
No, we can bring it back at a later meeting. We don't have to approve this tonight.
Was, was there an RFQ done for this or was it required?
No, we actually looked at piggybacking on another city's RFQ and that is an option in the report. Um, if you want to move forward with interviewing other firms or doing a formal RFQ, that would be a, an option.
Uh, Councilwoman Baca, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the, uh, other firms and also, uh, someone that has been working very closely with the city already, which is the Berkshire Group. Um, I feel that at this time when we approve it, we have to be responsible enough to be able to look at, uh, and not invent the wheel. Uh, he's been working very closely or they have been working very closely with the city already and are very familiar with a lot of our programs and our staff. And I feel at this time that we should, uh, sit down and, and see if they can come up with a proposal so that they can, uh, save us some money instead of going out to another firm.
Why don't we just do a, uh, an RFQ or just call some firms and, and have them bring your proposal? So you don't have to start all over. They could bring a proposal too.
Well, um, that's fine, but I would really like, since the vendor's here already working with the city, I really feel very strongly that why invent the wheel when we can just go ahead and maybe listen to their presentation and see, uh, what the cost would be. Um, I was assured it would be minimal. Um, and they already have gathered most of the information and having worked with the city for almost a year. And also very good relationship with a lot of our staff.
Um, can we get like three proposals? Maybe staff could call three different companies, including the one you're suggesting? So, so we can see that we're cost competitive.
Can we please listen to their presentation first before we move on with an, with an RFQ?
I mean, you want to compare two or three groups to get, you want to compare all these two or three, you know, what their, how much their cost.
Well, we have somebody that's already working with us. So let's hear their presentation first.
That's not always a qualifier. I would say let's hear three different presentations.
I'm trying to, my whole purpose has been to try to save money. Um, and, and I feel that at this point with having someone that's already on, in, in a sense, on staff or under contract, that it would save us money and it's, I feel it's not responsible to be able to have them make a presentation and bring this forward with the cost, with everything that they already have in motion.
I don't know. I, I'd just like to see three other proposals, because I thought their contract was done as far as I... Aren't they finished with their?
No, they're not finished. We're still working on a, a couple of other, uh, tweaks that we need to put as far as the janitorial and so forth. Um, there's been some discussion even as, even this morning about some of the possibilities. Um, so I would really...
I haven't heard about the Berkshire Group for a while. I mean, I don't know where their status is. I thought they were done. As far as I was concerned. I, they did a report a few weeks, maybe two months ago and then...
Well, if you would like for him to come back and I believe that he's coming back to town in May, Shannon, so that he can give a presentation and maybe include this as well.
Okay. Cause I heard there was issues with the, um, janitorial contract.
Yes, but I think we've, I think that we've ironed that out and we, like I said, we've met with staff this morning and it seems like it's, you know, we're moving forward with that. That's just one out of the many.
Well, can we have staff, I mean, they could get a proposal from this group, maybe the Berkshire Group, and then just find another group and bring it back at the next meeting. It'll be a quick, you know?
I, I really don't want to wa- waste staff's time when we have somebody in motion that can do a presentation first. You haven't even listened to how much it's gonna cost.
Well, I don't know. That's why you do a proposal to kind of get, you know, the, I mean, if we got three proposals, I couldn't compare costs then. Cause I think that this activity is different than what he's do- doing. I mean, they could just make three phone calls, get a proposal and then just go with it. That way at least, I, I could feel comfortable comparing three different costs.
I, I really feel very strongly that we've got someone here already. We're inventing the wheel. There's no reason to spend staff time right now when we have someone that's already working with staff and, and the different programs that we have in motion.
Do you want to bring this back for further discussion at the next meeting?
I would like to be able to bring it back so that he can make a presentation when he comes back in May. And what his plan is.
Okay. I think that's fine, but I would like staff to do another, maybe get another proposal and the one that's here in, in Berkshire's.
That's fine, but can we listen to Berkshire's first?
You can come here, but I...
And then we can move forward. If you do not agree to the cost, um, I am being guaranteed that the cost will be minimal, being that most of the work has already been done. And that's, that's, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Staff report doesn't say that Berkshire's work is being included somehow in here. Maybe we need to have staff look at it.
No, because that was, that was just discussed this morning.
What was this? Okay. You know, yes.
Uh, in the, in the name of moving this conversation along, maybe what we can do is we can schedule a presentation just because I'd like to know what Berkshire has, what are their, you know, findings and what are their recommendations? But I'm also always in favor of a competitive process so that I like you, I like to compare.
Well, we'll do both.
Proposals. So let's, what, yeah, let's, there should be a happy medium there.
All right. Okay. So basically, so at this point, we're gonna bring it back, the opportunity here, and then we're gonna go ahead and accept some additional bids with it as well.
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
And then we'll go from there. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move this, item number five, uh, to the following meeting or maybe?
No, no, to the, to May. We have to see when Mr. Harowitz is coming back into town.
With, with additional, uh, with additional bids that, uh, Councilmember Carlos Pacheco's requesting as well. All right. Item number six, which is an update on the proposed wireless communication facility at the forty-seven twenty-five Main Avenue, American Legion Hall, case number PR fourteen dash five six. Why don't we have the commander come up here? Just allow this for now. Normally I don't. It's not the norm. Uh, we'll have him say some words before the honorable and the distinguished Amy Harbin comes up. Okay?
Hi, I'm Al Polia, commander of Baldwin Park, uh, Post Two Forty-One, American Legion. And I'm here to try to get the city council and the mayor to help us stay in business. And our property was commercial for many years. And Clearwire in two thousand and eleven applied for the same permits and was granted them. But Clearwire backed out of the deal. Then the property was changed to multi-use, I reckon. And now Verizon's trying to do the same thing. And we, we're a nonprofit. We try to help veterans and youth and homeless people, but it's getting harder to do on just dinners and breakfasts. We need some income and this would help us a lot. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And Amy Harbin will come up here. So let's find out what the results are here. You could stand ready if you want, Commander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you've all seen the report that is item number six on the consent calendar. We have had an email from a representative of Verizon that came, I believe, yesterday. And it looks like that they are going to be applying for an exception, which is, which is the code. So we're anticipating that Verizon will be following the code, asking for an exception and will be going through that process.
All right. Okay. So, okay. So at this point, the application will be filed?
Well, that's what I've been told by Verizon.
All righty. So there's that, there's that possibility that they may, uh, possibly grant it. What's that? Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So, all right. So thank you. That's, that's good news, by the way. So what will happen, Commander, just to let you know, it's going to go to the planning commission. So I encourage you and the folks to be there and, uh, let's hope for the best. Okay? And if it goes through, I'll promise you I'll be there. I'm gonna have two ice cold glass of water with all, all the troops there. Okay? We're, we're talking the twenty-two ounce glass of water.
You got it. Contrary to a few opinions, American Legion likes our city and our leaders.
Yeah. We're gonna work with you guys.
Hey, Mayor, you know me and I know you.
I sure do.
How you been?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Yes, I recall when you were campaigning that you wanted to sign in front of my yard and you would do something for me. Is there any way that we could carry this plan for Verizon for ourselves?
Well, I'm, I'm, let's just put it this way. It's gonna go to the planning commission. I'm optimistic. So we'll celebrate after that. Okay? And we'll work together. Yes, sir.
There be no water, be royal.
Uh, all righty. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nice to see you. All right. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and move, um, to, for approval of this, of course, going to the plan commission. Item number six, which is an update on the proposed wireless communication. That's my motion.
Second.
Second. Any objections? See none. So move. All right. So at this point, we'll go over to the, uh, public hearing, uh, which is the public hearing regarding a request for consideration, a proposed amendment to the city's municipal code sign regulation, adding development standards for electronic reader, uh, board signs and temporary signings for newly established businesses, location, commercial industry, industrial and mixed use zones, properties applicant city of Baldwin Park, case number AZC one seven five. Anyone have any questions? Oh, let me open up the public hearing real quick. Can you do that? I'm gonna open up the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of this particular proposal, uh, you're, I'm up here now and must remain within the confines of this subject. Anyone opposing? See no opposition. At this point, I will now close the public hearing. Anyone have any questions of Amy? Oh, you do?
Dr. Padilla.
I'm gonna go and open a special.
When, when does the planning commission meet?
Oh, you know what? Amy, do we, we don't know yet, right? Do me, what we'll do, what we'll do is, is make sure that, make sure that, uh, commander and everyone knows so that this way you guys show up. But go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have the commander's phone number.
Good.
Um, so I'll let him know, you know, once we receive an application. That's the first step.
All righty. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and move for this unless you guys have questions. All right. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for the, uh, approval of the number twenty fifteen dash zero six four, resolution of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park's adopting the negative declaration of environmental impact and approving a, a health and substant- sustainability element for the general plan applicant city of Baldwin Park. That is my motion. Is there?
Second.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. That's right. That's saying it's, I read the wrong one. Public hearing regarding, excuse me. This one up here, right? Adopt resolution. A resolution of the city, uh, council of the city of Baldwin Park approving and adopting the negative declaration of environmental impact for an amendment to the city's municipal code, adding development standards for electronic reader board signs and temporary signage for the newly established business applicant city of Baldwin Park. That is my motion. Hello?
Second.
On second, second by Vice Mayor. At this point, any objections? See none. So move. Excellent presentation, Amy. Okay. Next one that we have is item eight, which is a public hearing regarding, uh, a request for consideration of a proposed amendment to the city's general plan to adopt a new health and sustainability element and adoption of the negative declaration of environmental impact, location, citywide applicant, city of Baldwin Park. This time I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for approval and that is a resolution of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park adopting the negative declaration of environmental impact. Oh, okay. That's right. You are, sorry about that. Let me open up the public hearing. Thank you very much, legal counsel. So at this point, I'd like to open up the, the, the actual public hearing for those wishing to speak on the subject that are in favor. Opposed? Sal, did you see anything? Oh, okay. All right. At this point, see no interest and now the public hearing close. Uh, at this point, let me go ahead and read the resolution of the city council of the city of Baldwin Park adopting the negative declaration of environmental impact and approving a health and sustainability element for the general plan applicant city of Baldwin Park. That is my motion.
Second.
Second. Any objections? See none. So move. All right. The next one is reports of officers, selections of printing. Can we bring this back? Let's go and bring this back. Okay?
Sure.
Um...
Was it?
We, um, it would be nice if we could discuss it tonight. Our next publication is going to print May first. So if we should get direction on April fifteenth, we, we may not be able to implement it, uh, by May first for the May twenty-third distribution date.
Let's just, for discussion. Okay. All righty. Yeah, let's just, for discussion, okay, all righty. Yeah, you know what, I think it'd be nice to kinda do like the old, uh, previous, um, newsletter that we used to print out in Baldwin Park, but...
Mayor, is that, is that option one or two?
Yeah, you know what?
That would be option number three, the, the old publication.
It's like the old ones, see?
Yeah.
Manny, do you mind walking us through kind of the options and maybe the costs?
Absolutely. Uh, I will start off with option number one, which is our current publication. So, I'll just show this to the city council as well as the community, and here's a paper sample attached to it. So, that would be option number one, and the cost for that one is, uh, three thousand nine hundred and twenty per issue. And, uh, option number two, which is the tablet type of publication, and I'm holding it up. And that is slightly, uh, a little bit less than the other, than the first publication. And the most cost-effective publication is option number three, which we can increase the frequency of to every other month, which would equate to six times a year versus our current four times a year for a cost-neutral amount. Uh, it would be an additional five hundred and fifty dollars, and what I didn't take into consideration is the additional revenue for advertisement. So, most likely, this publication would be a cost-neutral, and we would be able to increase it to six times a year versus the current four times a year. So, once again, we have option number three, option number two, and option number one is our current publication.
Okay, so, can you raise those up again?
Sure. Option number one, the chief has?
With a cost of like thirty-nine hundred?
Yes. Option, uh, option number two is approximately forty-two hundred, and the final option is thirty-one hundred, and I'd, and I'd like to say the mailing is, uh, pretty much the same for all three, because there is a range, uh, and all three publications fall within the range.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion for us to go ahead so that we can move ahead with this. The residents have also been requesting that we try to print it up more, um, we even had several residents that came up to say that some of the coupons in the past had expired, and I know that that's been taken care of, but I think that we should make a decision tonight and just go ahead with whatever...
With the one for six years, is that...
The one for six years, which is option number three, but I don't know.
Now, who's, who's the...
I'd like to make a decision tonight so we can let...
Does this include the printing, do we know the printing company?
The printing company, I believe, is, uh, let me see here, I haven't memorized it. It's a new vendor, and they print for the city of Los Angeles as well as the city of Anaheim, and they're in Los Angeles, and it's eye color printing and mailing.
Well, have you tried any of the local businesses?
Oh, yes, we, we sent an RFP, uh, and we sent out over a hundred and twenty, um, but, uh, it is, uh, it is very costly to create a publication like this because of the printing. Most of the printers, like the local printers, will possibly design it in-house, but they farm it out, or they send it out to a printing company.
Well, let's bring that back, let me look at that, can we do that?
It's council's discretion.
We also, let me, because I, I've sat with Manny on, on a couple of occasions, we also have, um, the school board, uh, Dr. Seviano, that's very interested in, apparently they're going to be purchasing three pages, correct?
Yes, they will be purchasing three pages, and that will be presented to the city council's, uh, approval and review at a future city council meeting, and they'll be purchasing three pages, and I'm, maybe possibly six, depending, because we translate our information. So, if, uh, unless they're going to only purchase three, one and a half pages of English and one and a half pages of Spanish, and there's still an opportunity for the Baldwin Park Business Association if they should choose to participate as well. So, once again, we could easily go to six issues per year if we choose option three.
Mayor, did, did you wanna bring it back?
Yeah, let's bring back that printing, I just wanna review that, can we look at some of those bids?
Yeah, and you know, I mean, let's, let's factor in some of the, um, some of the other entities that wanna purchase in, maybe that'll also have an impact on our decision.
Sure, and I...
If it's, if it's still a good price and it's a nicer product, and it's, the cost is being offset by a school district and some others, then that would certainly impact my decision.
Sure, and I'd also like to share with the city council, from my experience and knowledge, uh, there isn't a printer in Baldwin Park that would be able to produce this type of publication, number one, and number two, uh, the current printer, which I believe is, is in La Habra, uh, their current bid is approximately a little over five thousand dollars, about fifty-three hundred. This new proposal is thirty-nine hundred, three thousand nine hundred and twenty, so it was very advantageous for the city to, once again, go out to bid as we did a few years ago.
Bring it back just so we can look at it, is that okay?
Sure.
All right, so at this point, the decision's that we're gonna go with the six, the six newsletters per year, am I correct?
Well, we haven't made a decision.
It's coming back for vote, so we can't...
Oh, okay, all right, all right, so we're gonna hold off, that's what we're gonna do then. All right, okay, all right, so let's hold off for the next meeting. Well, that'd be nice, but you know what, let's look at, let's look at everything, let's bring it back.
Okay.
Look at it, okay? Yeah, let's do that, and we'll decide at the, on the fifteenth. Thanks, Norma, you're still here. Uh, okay, all right, so that's what we'll do. Okay, all right, so, um, we'll, we'll now go over to the, um, the discussion of, let's see, previous events, what, oh, this week, we're gonna bring this back to the following meeting as well. So, at this point, I'm going to go ahead, council members have anything before I close out?
Oh, I, I do wanna make a quick announcement. If you haven't tried the Himalayan Cafe yet, please do, it's excellent food, and it's, it's a new restaurant located at Main and Clark, so make your way over, it's really good. And we need to support the new businesses in town, of course.
What, what kind of dishes they have there? That's that new one, right?
It's a, it's a cuisine of Nepal, so Nepal is located between China and India, and it's got influences of Indian food, um, and so, but maybe a little, you know, that, that Asian, a little bit of an Asian flair too, or flavor. It's excellent. Spice and, um, you know, it's, it's really good.